We can all rise for the pledge, please. Mr. President, can you leave us in place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment's silence for men and women in the armed forces and for our first responders.
Mayor, before public comment, I'd like to make a motion to move item three up, to do that before public comment.
Second.
So we're doing the recognitions prior to public comment? Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those who have done before, we've recognized some of our community groups who are very important to our community, and also those who have done service for our town, both now and in the past, and I'd like to recognize a few today. The first is to Mr. Rob Burkhart. Can you come up, please? So, Mr. Burkhart, Town of New Milford, we'd like to thank you for your volunteer work with the Northville One Room Schoolhouse Committee and the Milford Trust for Historic Preservation. You've worked tirelessly to ensure history and the buildings of the Milford are preserved to help the next generation remember and enjoy you. We thank you for all your hard work, what you've done in the past, and continue to do each and every day.
My wife always says, over all these years, I was an Eagle Scout, and I'm still a 74-year-old Eagle Scout.
Next, if we could have the men and women of the Milford SERC team, please. So, we're in the Milford SERC team. The Town of New Milford, we'd like to recognize the Milford Community Emergency Response Team, Ms. SERC, with her tireless dedication to the town. Your program to educate volunteers about disaster preparedness, the hazards that may impact our area, and train them in basic disaster responses, such as fire safety, light search and rescue, team organization, disaster medical operations, ensures the town is ready for anything that comes our way. I know that firsthand by what you guys do, especially during that microburst. We cannot thank you enough. This is what makes New Milford such a special place to live and work. Thank you and keep up the wonderful job your team provides for our town. A few highlights. There's 24 active members of SERC. They do tremendous, tremendous work. As I've said before, when a microburst hit, they were there. When we had fires, our first responders, they're there to help with our first responders. We just cannot thank you guys enough for what you guys do. It's just outstanding. It just makes our town so special. So I want to thank you guys again. I'm blessed. Picture you guys back in the camp.
All right, here we go.
Next, the Milford Garden Club. And for those who don't know, the lovely flowers that are downtown, especially here on our wonderful Roger Sherman Town Hall, the Garden Club does that. They've done it decent every year. They do it all around town. I cannot thank you guys enough for making this such a beautiful downtown and a beautiful town, especially over with our new, we've got a new signs painting. You guys have done wonderful flowers there as well. I cannot thank you guys enough for that. So, the Town of New Milford, we'd like to recognize and thank the Milford Garden Club for the plantings and decorations your group has provided around town over the past several years. Your hard work and dedication are enjoyed by residents and visitors throughout the year. Your expertise can be seen throughout the town at the Vietnam War Memorial, all wars and World War I monuments, the Main Street and Church Street box planter boxes, the Mayor's Garden in front of Town Hall, the Town Hall Garden on Church Street, and the Historical Garden behind the Milford Historical Society Building. If you haven't seen that, you've got to go up there and check it out. It's like a little my secret garden. It's beautiful. Thank you for all you do, such as the donation of your time and effort to help New Milford grow. Cannot thank you and the Garden Club enough.
I would just like to say that I'm serving this on behalf of, of course, all of our members. We love what we do, and we love the fact that we can see that there are other people in the town that also are planting more and more every year to make our town look great. And we kept the bandstand.
Oh, yeah.
That traded from the Gilmore Girls through Halloween.
Awesome.
Okay, we're happy to do it. So, thank you.
In the Roger Sherman Chapter, National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, DAR. Come on up, Katie. And the Daughters of the American Revolution, there's so many wonderful things. First, you just go right down the stairs and you see their Hall of Fame of famous women here in the Milford, as they give tours to the young Girl Scouts or some of the young troops that come in or some of the schools. I tell them there, you guys, maybe one day you'll be on that wall, you know, given, you know, your time and talent for our wonderful town. So we do more than that, obviously. We do wonderful things from Constitution Day to all of our keeping our history together. And I'd just like to say, the Town of New Milford, we'd like to recognize and thank the members of the Roger Sherman Chapter, National Society, Daughter of the American Revolution. Your endless dedication to educate, promote, foster true patriotism and love of country in our town is remarkable. You can see it every day in all you do, from celebrating Constitution Week with a banner in grief in front of Town Hall, to inviting the sixth congressional regiment encampment, providing the pictures and information for the Milford Women's Hall of Fame in Town Hall, the Revolutionary War Soldier Grade marking at the West Meeting House Cemetery, and your involvement in the town's first Patriot Patriots' Day initiative. We thank you for all you do. Appreciate all you have done.
I accept this on behalf of all the members of the Roger Sherman Chapter. And so you know, starting next year, well, maybe next month, we'll be celebrating in 2020, the 100th anniversary of suffrage in our state, so we are going to be doing that along with the mayor, too. So, unprepared women.
Ms. Parsons, are you good, or do you want to come down and say a few more words?
No, that's fine.
Thank you very much. Jeff McBride, he please. Jeff, Jeff, five minutes, Jeff.
Well, that's only on one hand. Good evening, Jeff McBride, 288 Kent Road. I'd like to talk about a few things that some people don't seem to understand. How can people ask for info on any report before things are totally finalized? Until it is at that state, it is still not shareable to the public. But people who disrupt meetings here know this, and they end up being disrespectful, even though they know that the answer for they even start. How can anyone in their right mind ask for people support when they are publicly seen, fingering the audience on a video? It's the only other way I can put it. Is this the type of people you want running all of town? How old? How did two residents know about any meeting concerning Mr. Zarba? Did they attend all these meetings that Mr. Zarba and the mayor and everybody else was involved in concerning the DPW and what's going on? I would say no. All this intended was to disrupt the meeting of the town council on that night. Do we want people on the DTC reminding your affairs where they ask seated members to step down from their positions so they can put their own people in place of these? We have two sitting members on this town council that are Democrats. I voted for both of them, okay, because I had faith in them. And from my point of view, they've done an admirable job for two years. And it just disturbs me that they would be asked to step down so somebody else could take their place, so that they could try and gain positions on this town council. I don't think that's right. These two gentlemen here have done a great job from my perspective, and I think they should be here next year if they so choose. Just my own opinion. I sure don't want anybody from the DTC presenting me after what I have seen through various meetings. To me, they're out of touch right now, and they need to have some serious changes made within their organization if they're going to flourish in the future in this town. Now, my second thing I'd like to talk about, I told the mayor jokingly, and anybody in the audience that's on the Board of Education, if they come here and they want $100 million, Mayor, give it to them, okay? That's just a joke. But what I'm alluding to is the fact that I'm not going to bother with the Board of Education like I did the last couple of years. I'm going to promote technical schools to no end, okay? That's the future. Why? Because 60% of the graduating class in New Milford each year cannot afford to go to college, okay? So what are they going to do? They're going to work at Walmart, McDonald's, Dunkin' Donuts. They all can't work there, so we've got to try to provide a means for these people. And some of the jobs that offer tremendous amount of money, if you had needed a plumber and we had a technical school that could train him, and he's out there and licensed and stuff, he can make up to $45 an hour. Same way as a crane operator. If he's licensed and certified, he can make $42 an hour on average. If you've got a wind turbine machine where they have the big turbines up and the man is certified to run that, make $40 an hour. Same way with a commercial driver, $40 an hour, okay? Heavy equipment operator, $40 an hour. HVAC people, $40 an hour. Auto body repair, $40 an hour. Welders, $30 an hour. Auto mechanics, $35 an hour. And commercial drivers, $40 an hour. We need to be spending money on technical schools where we can give all of these kids, if you have a class of 200 and you've got 60% of them can't go to college, we need to help them, okay? And we need to work with all of these people that are licensed in all these various jobs that work in this town, to see if they will take them on in an apprenticeship and the town would support it. That way, we could create jobs for all these kids that have nowhere to go. Kids that graduate today, if they can't afford to go to college, but they go anyway, they create a tremendous debt, and how many years does it take them to pay that off? If these kids get the training and the support of Town of New Milford, win their license, they've got a job, doesn't cost them anything. It might cost the taxpayers a few dollars, but I'd support something like this. So I'm asking you folks to give this some real serious thought after you all get reelected. I still have faith in every one of you that's sitting here tonight. I did two years ago, and I still do today. And I thank you all very, very much for the job that you guys have done the last two years. You all had some tough decisions. Some weren't agreeable, some were agreeable, but still, you came to a happy medium and you made the Town of New Milford move forward, okay? And that's the name of the game. And technical schools is part of moving forward. So again, I'm asking you to give us some serious thought, and when you start your new two-year seating as town council members, please work on that. It's a worthwhile adventure for all of us. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's the end of the session. Thank you. Next, going to Mayor's remarks. First, congratulations to the Milford High School Band and Color Guard for their back-to-back state championships. Great to see. And congratulations to our band director, Mr. Sizdek, and all of the band members. Congratulations to our Milford High School Boys Cross Country Team for their undefeated season and their SWC championship. Outstanding. I'd also like to congratulate Jack Ranja for becoming an Eagle Scout. I was at the honor yesterday. It was wonderful to see, you know, the numerous Eagle Scouts that we do get every year, and it's just great to see what they do. It's a true honor, and congratulations to he and his family. I'd also like to congratulate the girls' New Milford High School swim team, especially the seniors. I went to their meet at Canterbury, and congratulations on their season. I'd also like to congratulate our councilman here, who's not here today, Mike Nahom, who won the exterior U.S. Championships, and now he's competing in the Worlds in Maui, Hawaii. So, congratulations to Councilman Nahom. Hoping wishes are the best for him there. Also, I'd like to thank CEDUS, which is the Connecticut Development Association, for awarding us our accreditation in economic development for our best practices in land use and economic development. So that was one of the things that we've been working on when I first got here, is to really hone in and work on our best practices, and we're glad that CEDUS has recognized that. We are one of four towns, I believe, in the area to get that accolade. Also, a quick update on our roads. Fort Ice Road, road construction. The top course is scheduled for this week, and this is all weather-dependent. So we, for those who don't know, we are due for a pretty good storm on Thursday, but if the weather holds out, that's kind of what we're looking at. On Pickett District, the top course is down. They're working on driveway aprons in the punch list. Overlook Drive, the drainage, we were making sure that the drainage was properly getting done on that road because a lot of the water that was there. Our DPW engineers were there working at it to come up with a good solution, so that work will begin in process. We're definitely still looking at getting the road completed, major completion, by mid-November. The Seronoble Roof, the contractor continues working on the flashing around there. That's scheduled to be completed within the next month or so, and I can't thank the contractor enough for getting that work done prior to winter. Quickly, also, we had our second opioids meeting, our task force. We had some items that we're working on. First is an overdose map for first responders, and what that'll allow our first responders to do is if there's major clusters within our area and our region, we would be able to see that and would be able to monitor if there's migration of that particular drug that was affecting so many people, we'd be on the lookout for that to come into New Milford. If it did, we would have the wherewithal to see that coming into town. Also, the police were still doing our no tolerance. Also, if you are caught selling drugs, we're going to prosecute you to the full extent of the law. Also, we're working with state and federal agencies to catch larger dealers. The youth agency and the Board of Ed are working on youth education for vaping, and alcohol is also a big problem, so we're working on alcohol education as well. Also, the Board of Education is looking to set up a parenting academy for parents, and I'll be briefing the council later on on that. They're also looking to set up a town hall for underage drinking. New Milford Hospital has a new program, and their program is when an overdose victim comes into the hospital, they'll have someone right then and there to help them, as well as our at-risk navigator, so they're going to be getting kind of a back-to-back census. And they'll also be calling from the hospital as well about rooms available for those that are addicted. I've also been in contact with State Senator Minor and State Representative Bill Buckby. State Representative Buckby is going to be putting in some legislation concerning houses that have multiple people dealing drugs in there, about forfeiture of those particular homes. And also, working on with our federal legislatures, currently, if you are trying to get off the drugs yourself and you go for a urine test and your urine is clear, your health insurance will not provide you a place to go. So I've asked them to set in new legislation that if you feel, and your doctor signs off on it, even if you have a clean urine, that you can seek remedies with your health insurance to get into a bed. So that's very important in listening to what some of the people were saying. Next, for Department of Public Works, we have Jack Healy here, but I just wanted to just mention real quick a couple of few things. We continue with our brush pushback and our sightline improvement for road safety. Also, we have our own CRA, which is our data software called Cartograph. We're working on that, and Cartograph allows us to keep time of the jobs. It also lets us keep track of costs, both material and work, and it also helps us to prepare for things. For instance, we began to work this year on an ice prevention program. So what we were able to do is buy iPads for all of our trucks, so the drivers who are boots on the ground actually travel their route. They also walk the route when deemable, and there's places where we all know where the water runs across the road, runs across the road in the spring and summer. What'll happen in the winter? That'll be ice. So then what happens is, we've got to take the truck back out there, material, time, so what we're doing is being preventative, putting in drainage now, so that's going to save us in the long run. Also, the DPW with, under Jack's leadership, they've been walking the roads for our 2020 road program, so we'll be bringing the council up to date on that a little bit later. Also been working in tandem with our Municipal Roads Committee, and also they're beginning to work on the winter maintenance ahead of time for dirt roads, making sure to put down, they've been looking at a different type of stone material to make sure, because we know when we have washouts, that's costly for the town. They're also working on their capital plan, and we're also working in tandem with the Board of Education on capital projects, which I'll be bringing forward at the later date, which is parking lots, using our bid, our asphalt bid for their parking lots for the Board of Ed to reduce cost, and also looking to jointly work on expenditures for playgrounds. So they have two playgrounds we're looking at. We have one, there's a way to symbiotically purchase using economies of scale to reduce costs. Also, working with Celtic Energy, which our town council approved, we're waiting on the Board of Education so that Celtic Energy can be our energy consultant, and they will come in and do a deep data drive, deep data dive here, looking at what we can do to reduce expenditures that'll save money, and then that money we could use with the approval of town council and Board of Finance for capital requirements, whether it be a chiller for the high school or HVAC for Seronoble or things that we need. So it's another way to help mitigate costs with no additional costs for cash flow for the taxpayer. Just to let you know, the police are having their coffee with a cop this Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Starbucks. Also, the police have been talking with Chief Saruto. We're continuing our We're continuing our emphasis on traffic and speeding. They did very well the first, last, a couple of days ago. They had a couple of streets that they were very vigilant on. They're going to continue to do that, as well as working on drug enforcement. The senior center, just real quick, they had 122 lunches this week, past week, 155 rides to 46 clients, 74 volunteer hours. They helped 90 individuals with food insecurity and medical and financial insurance services. They also had 552 duplicated participants in various programs. So I'd like to thank the senior center for all they do for our seniors. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
You just said something about the police working certain roads.
Yes, sir.
So what roads are they?
So what they do is they put them out on Facebook the day before and let them, let them know. So they'll be doing that again, I believe, Thursday for Friday.
I want to know what roads they're doing.
Do you want to go there and slow down? Do they really go on the roads?
They actually did.
They tell you some.
They told you some.
They ended up on my road, which was not, there was no advance warning of that.
How'd that go?
Fine for me. Thank goodness.
I guess it just pays to follow the speed.
That's right. You're right. You're absolutely right.
Doug, I'm sure you always do.
Okay, item five.
I do. You talk like an old lady.
You do. It's a little TMI. Move to accept the consent of item 5A and 5B.
Second.
Oh. Second, but I know this is trivial, but on page two, the mayor's remarks, the fourth paragraph down, even though my passion in history, I remember I had a diagram, sentences and sentences and sentences. It should not read, recently held, it is reunion.
Sir.
Typo.
Typo.
I agree.
Just a typo.
Yes, sir.
So we accept that as a clerical error?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a second?
Yep, first a second. Any other discussion? Noting councilman bear's adjustment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Stephanie, I got it upstairs.
Item six.
Go into executive session.
Item six, I'd like to move we go into executive session and invite attorney Tabella and our tax assessor. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We're going to go into executive session.
Okay, item number eight, A. Move to accept the appointment of Jack Healy as Director of Public Works.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Healy? For those who don't know, Mr. Healy?
Hi, Jack.
So Jack, kind of just so everyone can be aware, Jack was the former DPW Director in Litchfield, then moved to be the, to be the former Public Works Director of Berlin, and then became the Town Manager of Berlin. Very excited that Jack joined our team. Brings with him a lot of talent, a lot of experience, and I think he'll be a wonderful asset. And he already is, as the Acting Director. Now, with your approval, the Director of Public Works. Dr. Mullin?
I have a question or two.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Jack?
Go ahead.
You can stand anywhere you want, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, I'll stay here.
Hi, my name is Pete Mullin. Nice to meet you. Have you had a chance to look at the DPW's budget for the rest of this fiscal year?
I started to go through, I can't say that fully versus the, I've said more than I guess.
Okay. Is there anything in the budget that stand, that you've seen so far that stands out to you? Any concerns at all?
No, I think, I think that right now we're, we're on, from what I can tell, we're on budget, and I really don't have any, anything alarming to me at this point, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Let's vote first.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Jack. Congratulations.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Okay, item 8V. Move to accept a request that the town council and the Board of Finance approve transfer of funds of $10,000 from part-time seasonal account number 103.
Nope, excuse me.
Sorry, that's what it says, sir.
Yeah, I know, that's not correct.
Okay, so what is it?
It would be.
Read it. Wait a second. This is all the same account number?
Yes.
Okay, 10430100513.
00, 00, that's, that's the OR code, and the object code is 51320.
Oh, you were, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. So that's the seasonal, part-time seasonal account to, I think this is supposed to say full-time? That's the typo there. Full-time personnel. Is there a new account number there, sir?
Yes, there is.
All right, go right ahead and read it out. Okay, thank you. The reason for the transfer is two facility maintenance custodians are on medical leave for at least four months.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a question. Did we run into any issues, the town attorney, with the numbers not being correct and what was printed and what we're voting on?
No, the printing is informational, and the fact is that the transfer is going to come from the account in accordance with the guidance of the Director anyway.
Okay.
Director in charge of all accounts.
So we're moving money from, from seasonal to full-time. Is that going to affect seasonal in the spring or something like that?
I'm just supposed to get it done in the past. It's, it's going to be for a replacement, a temporary replacement. We can come in and fill in one of those slots until these people return.
Okay. Then I just noticed there's a third spot on the form for a mayor's approval, but I didn't see it there. Is that unusual?
After the council approves it, then I sign it.
Okay, right. Thank you.
Has to be, yep. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item nine, Finance Director Update.
On September 30th, I received a check in the amount of $2.7 million from Waste Management. The current balance in this fund is $15,4473.81. There was a maturity of approximately $250,000 and a $100,000 cash position within our Janey investment that I transferred into our Waste Management STIF account. And that's earning, last I saw, was 2.18%. There are three payments of $2.7 million remaining in the Waste Management Fund for a total of $8,100,000. The auditors have finished up their fieldwork for FY19. There are no issues to report, no material weaknesses, no deficiencies, no issues whatsoever. I expect draft financial statements within, sometimes in November, and we are on schedule to file our CAFR on time. The audit, the audit presentation date is yet to be determined, but should occur before the budget deliberations commence. Revenues as of September 30th, revenues are at 46% of budget. On a straight-line basis, we would expect these to be at 25%. I expect the first installment of the ECS to be delivered by the end of this month, which, if everything goes as planned, should be approximately $2,711,77. This is approximately $100,000 less than last year's installment. Tax collections are at 54.7% of budget overall, with current taxes at 55.6%. On the expenditure side, expenditures are at 32.8% of budget with encumbrances. Without encumbrances, they are 28.3% of budget. The Police Department is at 27.1% of budget with encumbrances and 26.3% without. Overtime and dispatchers' overtime are currently at 40.6% and 60.4% of budget respectively. Debt issuance expense is currently over budget, but I have rectified that in October, and the amount has been adjusted in October's financials from funds carried in force in the Finance Department. Some salary lines, including the self-sustaining lines within the youth agencies, are running ahead of budget due to the front-loaded nature of summer programs. The offsetting revenues for these lines compensate for the situation. In summary, revenues are at $47,423,642.8, and expenditures are $23,490,926.1, leaving the town with a positive cash flow of $23,932,716.7.
Thank you, Greg. Just real quick for the council, as Greg had mentioned, when it comes to the police, the overtime and dispatch overtime, this is something that we've been working on. I've, I've been monitoring this. Due to control. I've been monitoring this due to contractual obligations. That's been built into the contract, especially for dispatch overtime. One of the solutions that we have had have is we have got permission from the union to hire a part-time person per diem, which will help drive the overtime lower because some of this overtime was built automatically into the contract itself. So we're working on that. As we have done that, two dispatchers have left. So we've been retraining new people to come in. So I believe one now is going to be due to come online, and then one of our part-timers is just about finishing up. So we will see a reduction in the overtime for dispatch. As far as police overtime, we've had, I believe, three people out on medical. I believe one more went out on medical, and we have one more that's in military that'll be coming back. So we've had five people that have been either on limited duty or have been off or a combination of those, which has driven up that overtime. So as they come back in, and we also have two officers that are in the training that I believe are coming out in December, I believe. So when they come out, again, we should see a pretty substantial reduction in our overtime, in regular overtime. So we've been monitoring it, trying to work within the departments with that. But I just wanted to, before I open it up for questions, just give an overview to the council of where we are and why those numbers are higher. Any questions for Greg?
No, I'll go.
You guys go ahead, I've got a bunch.
I just have one. We have three more installments from Waste Management. Did I hear that right?
Yes.
So they paid their debt in fall in, let's see, 2022?
22, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Chris?
The ECS money, so it was roughly $2 million. It was less, how much less?
$100,000 less than this installment from the previous year.
Was that expected?
Yes.
Okay. And, but we will, it'll catch up in?
No, it will. The budget is approximately $598,000 less than 2019.
Okay. On just some of the line items that kind of stuck out to me. So Town Council Consultants were at 96%, 97% of the budget.
Yeah, but there's $10,000 incumbent. That's not money out the door. On a cruel basis, yes, but on a cash basis...
And Finance Office dues conference, 93%? Two. Is that?
Yeah, we pay, that's an upfront cost.
Upfront, okay. So you're not expecting it to go over budget? The police, we talked about, the one thing on the police that stuck out, though, and it's not a lot of dollars, but EAP is close to budget. And I'm wondering, and that's probably not a question for you, but you get concerned, is there an issue within the department that they're using more ESP? Maybe we could talk to the chief about that.
I'll ask the chief, Mr. Bolero, to opine on that.
The fire departments, some of them are at zero. Is that normal?
They request their monies at all different times.
And the library, materials and supply, there's a lot of dollars there, and they're at 53%. Is that typical for this time of year?
Yeah, we give them their allocation, and they show the expenditures, and then they request more money from us.
Okay. All right, that's it.
All right. Revenue side, total Finance Office. Currently, the delta is $153,000 unfavorable. Is that because the ECS money came in lower than expected? Because that's close to the same amount that's...
Well, the ECS is under Finance, it's under the Board of Education.
All right, so the delta of $153,000 roughly unfavorable revenue for Finance Office, will that come overtime, is it not a straight line?
Yeah, no, this is definitely not a straight line.
So that'll come back to us? All right, awesome. Similar question about the police with the mayor's comments. Again, we're only a quarter into the new fiscal year. We've got an unfavorable variance of $67,000. Is that going to bleed off over the next nine months with the corrective actions that the mayor mentioned?
That would be a question for the chief.
Okay. A similar question with the fire department. We have an unfavorable variance only three months in of $65,000. Is that going to change over time?
Fire department?
Mm-hmm.
They request their funds, normally they do it quarterly or bi-annually. So, no, that doesn't show any particular straight-line pattern.
Okay, so that will work itself out?
No, no, we wouldn't give them more. They request their money, and we send them their money via check. So we wouldn't send them more than budget.
Okay, recycling. Current variance is $41,000 unfavorable. Again, is there some seasonality to that? Is that going to work itself out?
Is this revenues or?
Oh, no, sorry, I jumped to expenses, I apologize. Page 12, recycle center? It looks like when you take the combination of year-to-date expended plus encumbrances versus budget on a straight-line basis, granted, we're running an unfavorable variance of about $41,000. Is that going to work itself out?
I hope so. We have the Public Works Director here, perhaps he can answer that question.
Sorry, Jack.
That's okay. I actually have concerns about that because of the market. And we've talked about the recycling. The recycling market has collapsed in the last couple of years. You've gone from getting a positive return on your recyclables to a negative, you're actually paying to burn them. It's one of the things that the recycling community's, I think we talked about it Wednesday night. I'm concerned about that.
Okay, you mean Wednesday night?
Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday. All right. I'm forward to that discussion. Right below that building maintenance, again, it looks like we've got between year-to-date expended encumbrances, we're running like a $30,000 unfavorable variance. Is that going to work itself out?
Right now, they're at 27%. And that's including encumbrances of $38,000. So I don't expect that to be a problem.
Okay. I'm just picking off the big ones. You already mentioned seasonality for youth agency. Does that also include the MACs and the youth before-aftercare? All right. And last but not least, library, not just materials, but, and Parks and Rec. Library's got a $77,000 unfavorable variance. Is that going to work out? What's driving that?
I would say that their materials and supplies are front loaded.
Is there any way in Munis that we could drop in a column on these reports that show the prior year as of month three so that we wouldn't be asking these questions? We could just see it on the analysis?
Possible, I'll look into it.
That would be, I just don't waste our time, but if we could do that, that would be awesome. Parks and Rec, again, Parks and Rec's a big one. Unfavorable variance about $180,000, only three months in.
Yeah, but you also have $100,000 of encumbrances too.
Okay. So again, that's $80,000 unfavorable if you take out the encumbrances. You think it's going to come on budget?
I don't see any problem. If you start looking at percentages, you look at their personnel lines, and those are the ones where the majority of their funds are. And they're all within the 25% straight-line limit that I would expect. So, no. And their self-sustaining contractual, they have revenues that offset that. So I foresee no problem there.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. Mullin?
I think one thing that happens with Parks and Rec, from my experience, and I thought you probably could speak to this too, they have a lot of income generated in the spring. Like adult softball, all the payments come in in the spring, and there's a lot of expenses. So by the time June 30 rolls around, it does bounce out. At this time of year, it looks terrible, usually. So that's pretty normal.
Yeah, that's why I'd love to see that column dropped in and shows the prior year, because then you can say, yep, it's the same every year, and we wouldn't be thinking anything.
I'll look into that.
That'd be helpful. Thank you.
I agree with Dr. Mullin. Also, they do the boat slips. That comes in February and stuff, and a lot of money. A lot of money comes in later in the year. So it's the latter where they collect their money. So you're collecting... Same thing with Redcon. That money usually is in in June, even though Redcon does start in July. So bulk of money is the second half of the... Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Greg?
I have a question.
Doug?
Greg, I remember we spoke, it was probably six or eight months ago. Remember, we talked about the percentage? You said that there were like 1.7 earnings on that account, and we moved it. Remember, we got a 2-point...
Oh, you're talking about Waste Management?
Yes.
The JAMMY?
Investment, yeah.
What's happening is when these shorter-term maturities mature, I'm taking them and I'm unwinding them and rolling them back into their original investment in STIF.
Right. And how, what was the percentage on that, 2.1?
2.18, last I checked.
And we were making 1.7 before.
Well, you know, they're all different maturities, all different interest rates, but...
And how much is that in that account?
Remaining? Originally $5 million, so I'd have to say somewhere approximately over $4 million, 4.3, something like that.
And you made around 250, correct? You said somewhere around there? What you said, the interest when you were explaining it? When you said how much, how much we made out of the account?
I don't think it did.
Well, 2% on 5 would be...
Well, again, I didn't talk about...
What did you state that was the, well, I remember we went from 1.7 or 1.7...
Oh, you're talking our JAMMY investment or our STIF overall? I mean, we have several, we have several investments for Waste Management. We have Webster, we have STIF, and we have JAMMY. So they're all...
And there's about $5 million, or a little less than that in there?
Little less than $5 in JAMMY. And the majority, $10 million is split between STIF and Webster.
Because I'm a big proponent of having money make money. And this should have been done a long time ago before, maybe, I don't know who was here when it first started, but it wasn't put into the right investments, even though non-risk investments. And I like to see the money make money. So I guess in the future, what I'm saying is, we're going to have 15, we have $15 million now, we have another $8 million. So in three years, maybe it'll be, whatever, when you offset the taxes and whatever you take off of that, it should probably be around $17, $18 million. We should start thinking about long-term, having this money make more money, maybe somewhere down the line with the Towns Council meeting. Because, you know, it shouldn't have been done in the beginning. And this money could probably double if it was done properly over the, how many years?
Well, again, you have, you know, we're restricted on what...
No, I understand that. But in the beginning, it wasn't even, it wasn't even invested in the beginning. It wasn't hardly...
I couldn't speak to that.
No, I understand.
I can't imagine that would be the case, though. Ray J. Coxey was here, I'm sure he would know that money follow.
No, it wasn't invested because he talked too long.
It wasn't? Surprising.
If it wasn't, it wasn't making a whole lot.
Well, we can't change what happened in the past, so...
But anyway, I talked to Tom Gitcher, who was involved in it. And he was on the Parks and Rec. And there was a committee that was going to try to set up an investment, but it never got proposed, so...
Well, you know, this is something to keep in mind as we go forward in the budget. We rely on some of this money
Exactly.
coming in on the revenue side. So we got three years left, and, you know, I don't know. There's got to be some sort of an exit strategy at some point.
Thank you.
Anything else for Greg? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 10. Move that we accept approximately 25 acres of property from the Northwest Conservation District, Inc. along Route 7, Danbury Road, from the Northwest Conservation District, Inc. for passive recreational use only, and seek a CGS 8-24 Planning Commission approval, and schedule a town meeting to accept the transfer.
Second.
For Dr. Mullin?
I brought up this issue before. I'm concerned about the word passive because I don't think it has a definition at the state level.
I can address that.
Good.
The, there are three statutes in the entire state that talk about passive recreation. None of them define it. There are 28 cases between the Superior Court up to the Supreme Court. None of them define passive recreation. There are a number of cases out of state that do define it. But they define them variably. Pennsylvania passive recreation includes baseball. In Massachusetts, it does not. Passive recreation includes camping in Pennsylvania. It does not in other states. The best definition that I can find is something that has a low environmental impact, which is very vague. What it does mean, definitely, is no structures. There's no motorized vehicles that are allowed to be used. Bicycles have to be human-powered. There can be maintenance and things of that nature. But passive simply means what it says. There's not going to be any concerts, there's not going to be a basketball court built, and things of that nature. I would suggest that passive means what we, what we come to determine by custom because there is no definition in this state. There absolutely isn't that. I researched that exhaustively. And as a matter of fact, Dr. Mullin and I had this discussion right about 10 years ago. He asked where we could find a definition. Which is sending animals out. But in any event, so the reality is that passive recreation is something that we're going to have to understand is going to be something that is not, is not structural, is not mechanized, and things of that nature. If you take a look, and you drafted the restrictions as best as I could to try to embrace the spirit of passive recreation. And it's hard to do when you're doing it in terms of restrictions. What you're saying, what you're saying, essentially, can't be done.
Right.
Five of 10 in your, in your package. And that pretty well talks about what can not be done, which is a difficult way of saying what can be done. Interestingly enough, there's an active birding area there, which we are carving out to allow maintenance of. If you clear that, there's a great view shed, I understand, of the city, of the town. The mayor informed me of. The only question is whether that's on the south or the north side of the bridge. I thought it was on the south side of the bridge. But the Northwest District is not sure what side it's on. They're good with that. But all these restrictions have been reviewed by them. I drafted them at their request before they agreed to sell, to send us the property. What would happen is this would be recorded on the land records, and then the D, which is, which is the actual grant of the property, would contain what's known as Schedule A, which is attached to this, to this instrument. And that includes a reference, of course, to the restrictions. And the other encumbrance is on the property. It's 25 acres. It's, it's great property, and it's incredibly worth saving. It will be conserved in perpetuity, and it will be, it will be prohibited from being despoiled with, with construction and motorized or mechanized toys and tools and things of that nature. So that's the, that's the deal. The Northwest District is ready to go ahead and convey this. It just needs your approval so it can go to the Planning Commission for an 824 program, and then, of course, to a town meeting for acceptance.
So, first of all, thank you to the Northwest Conservation District for thinking about us. I don't want to take away from the parcel in that it's strategically important. But one of the issues I've raised for the last two years is when we get a parcel of land, it costs us to maintain it. And I have yet to get an answer out of Parks and Rec, how much does it cost? So if I do some rough numbers, 25 acres, and let's say at going rate with a rough cut is 35 an acre to mow, that's 8.75 every mow. And let's just say three mows a season. That's like with a bush hout, really basic, really, really basic. So that's another $2,500 we've got to find in our budget. Now, this also says gravel and parking. So I think at the town meeting, we should present how much it's going to cost to maintain. I know we haven't done that before, but I think that's part of our fiduciary responsibility.
1,000% agree with that.
I totally agree.
They're also talking about signs, so we have to put sign in job.
Yep, and signs.
It's going to be a cost associated with putting that out and maintaining.
So one of the things I'm looking at is having a private company come in for a sign and do that work. Also, for the trail clearing, we have the youth agency that gets the Northwest Investment Grant from the, from the, from the Northwest Investment Board, where we hire the kids. They did trail clearing this past year. They will be doing the trail clearing. So there'll be no cost to the taxpayer.
And they'll do it every year?
Yep.
Okay.
But, and then as far as the, you're keeping the majority of the property...
Wild.
Wild?
Yep.
But there'll be certain paths that would be mowed? And that I'm looking for a private company to come in for the sponsorship to do that.
Okay.
So I wholeheartedly agree with you, that we definitely need to be telling the taxpayer that at a town meeting.
And the parking area. Well, and, and here's a way to think about this for the future. I know that, again, this is a big topic, but maybe we wanna think about doing what the land trusts do and say, when somebody donates us a piece of land, we would like them to also give an endowment gift so that we have self-sustaining maintenance. It's just a thought.
In this case, I don't know.
I, I couldn't agree with Lisa more, because the Park and Rec, we had Holt Meadows, you know, the hidden treasures. Now they're, now they're at Pettibone. And every time you sit in a meeting, you say to Dan, you know, how come we're behind? How come we're this and that? Because, because we keep getting more and more property from them. You know, they have to trim the grass along here, and this, and everything always falls into Park and Rec's lap. So I couldn't agree more, because every time we get a gift, it puts more pressure on the staff, and usually it's Park and Rec. So I wholeheartedly agree with Lisa. You know, it's great that somebody's giving us a gift, but now we have to take care of it. It's like getting a car and it's broken down and you gotta fix it all the time. Somebody's gotta pay for that, and so I agree.
Something for the future, I'm not sure what mechanism that would be to put that change in place, whether it's charter or something else, but I think we need to think about.
Because we always think of Park and Rec, which is, you know, they're behind and they're spending this money, money, but people don't know how much that keeps being put on them. Snow removal and a new, you know, and a new, you know, community center, and then Holt Meadows and treasures. All these things take time to mow and take care of. And when you still have the same amount of staff and you're getting more stuff to do, it's tough. And the person to yell at is Park and Rec, how come it's not mowed? Somebody's walking through it and it's rained three days and four days in a row, so.
Well, we can figure out those costs for the town meeting.
Absolutely.
Couple of questions, Pete, just for the public, can you describe where this is? Is this just?
So if you're leaving town hall, you're going down Veterans Bridge? It's all of that property on the right-hand side, from the bridge all the way to Husatonic Brewery.
And why, why is the Northwest Conversation Conservation District wanting to give this to us?
So Randy, if you can, I'm gonna make sure I do, said this correct. This actually was supposed to go to the town years ago, but I believe there was, when we were getting, accessing funding from GE, Fonseca, correctly?
Yeah.
That we couldn't really hold that parcel. So, so the conservancy took that parcel fully well knowing at some point in time that the town would have the property.
The reality, what the mayor says is correct. What happened is that this property was purchased with funds that were furnished with a GE PCB settlement. Those funds were not directed to municipalities, they were given to foundations and they were given to trusts. And the town, in order to obtain this property, would have to obtain it through a trust vehicle. And that was just simply the term, as I understand it now. I wasn't privy to the contract, but as I understand it, that was the term of the settlement, in order to just, to have the biggest bang for the buck with administering these funds. So the Conservation District used those funds to purchase this property and then convey it to the, to the locale.
And walking with that was Selectman Reed, who's the chairman of the conservancy. I mean, it's absolutely stunning in there. And I found out that there are birds that were nesting there, that were like, you know, endangered or whatever. And then also an ancillary positive to it. So one of the trails, when they cleared the trail and they've done it, the conservancy did it, when you would go from the parking lot, the gravel parking lot, go all through there, you then could connect to the sidewalk that's with the bridge. You then could go all the way across the bridge, and now you can walk on the river walk that's there. And then with the council's approval, as we did back in the spring, we've got our seventy thousand dollars to then turn the river walk up through Patriots Way into the downtown. So now we have miles of road at a cost, or miles of a walk, that costs the taxpayer seventy thousand bucks. So to me, it's like a triple win-win-win.
Yeah. Thank you, Pete.
Chris?
I'm assuming that the grantor is such a situation where there's no tax revenue coming in currently from this property?
No, it's five oh one C three.
Yeah. Yeah. So there's, it's a revenue-neutral.
Any other discussion, Dr. Mull?
Are people allowed to walk on this trail right now?
Yep.
Yeah. There's a parking lot.
Be careful about milk stuff.
Milkweed.
Yeah, milkweed. I went on there, I got hit with it.
Oh, is that what?
Oh, yeah.
We'll set up.
Learned my lesson there.
I mean, the other part of this issue with this property is, there's nothing they could do with it anyway. It's in a huge flight plane.
Yep, right.
It's totally saturated. But, all right, we take it, but it'd be nice if we could keep the cost down.
Absolutely.
But if we didn't take it, it's not gonna change. That property's not gonna change. Nobody's building on it.
But it would get grown over. Wouldn't be able to walk on it.
Maybe somebody would care for it, as opposed to us caring for it. Just another point to look at, that's, thank you.
Any other discussion, we had a first and a second, all's in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Thank you. Next. An update from our IT department and Mr. Watson. So I had asked Mr. Watson to come in to kinda give us an, an overview of our, our IT, kind of globally, kind of a high, high thirty thousand square foot look-through. He's been doing his due diligence. When I asked him to come on a board to really look at our network, how things are, and I'd like for him to apprise you of what we, what he's done so far. Watson?
Could you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, who are you? My name is David Watson. Nice to meet you.
And you are, and could you introduce yourself?
I'm the director of.
Thank you, we have people out in the world that don't know who you are.
I thought that was introduction, my apologies.
Okay.
All right, so it's been a hundred days now, and what I'm about to list off is by no way all-inclusive. There's a lot of meaningful things on there. There's also things that have not yet been remediated, so to discuss them here today would be negligent. So there will be further updates. Here is what I'm comfortable discussing, more or less because it's already been remediated. One of the first things I found is the town and PD's off-site backups, which by the, obviously by the inference there, it's supposed to be outside of the network and off-site, right? They were in JPCC, and they were also positioned, positioned underneath the sprinkler system. So the one for the PD was temporarily moved into the town servers over on Bridge Street, and the ones for the town were moved into the PD server room. We've since implemented a imaging-based backup solution that is now up in the cloud. So if something happens to our internal infrastructure, malicious software, you've all seen ransomware going on throughout the state, throughout the country, those would have been affected had we been hit. There's no two ways about it. They were in the network, they were in no way protected. Now they are off-site and a completely separate entity. We've also established a Windows Update Server. Windows Updates are essentially the way that Microsoft patches the operating system. A vulnerability is found, they find a way to fix that vulnerability, and then they release it to the public. There's a number of other reasons they do that, but for the purposes of this conversation, that's why we're touching upon it. So having a Windows Update Server makes it so that you can prevent bad updates that are recently released. They're not out in the wild yet, you haven't had an opportunity to see how they behave. One, about a week or two ago, broke printing for everyone. Not in our organization, but just in general, that was the issue that was caused by Microsoft releasing it. Unfortunately, these things happen. So the Windows, Windows Update Server serves two purposes. One, it allows us to stage those updates, someone else has that pain before we do. We can test internally in a few computers and then roll it out once everyone doesn't say, everything blew up on me. It also lets us see what the current update status is of all the computers in the organization. Before this was in place, there was really no way of knowing. Every computer in the organization and servers, they all need to be patched. And it's really important that you know what is patched and what is not patched, so you can address things as appropriate. There's also a IT usage policy that is currently awaiting approval. That allows us to do a number of things, preserve data security, make sure, for example, if someone is sharing secured data, that it's on an encrypted thumb drive. It sets a policy that personally on equipment can't just be brought in. There's a number of different things that addresses, but as it's still pending approval, I can't really be thorough on that. We've also established an inactive system timeout policy. This is pretty standard practice in most organizations. And what essentially this means is if anyone in town walks away from their computer for more than ten minutes or just doesn't interact with it, be it the mouse, keyboard, or touchscreen if appropriate, it times out and it locks itself. So if you get up from your computer, you walk away for a moment, someone else doesn't sit down in front of it and do something malicious under your user account. Previous to implementing this, there was no lockout policy. The computers were just indefinitely left unlocked. I've also scrubbed over two hundred inactive workstations from Active Directory. Just to take a step back real quick, Active Directory is what allows you to manage users and computers in your organization at a very basic level explanation. Computers that are approved to be on your domain exist in Active Directory. That's how they're able to reach out and say, my username is such, and this is my password, and it says, yes, that's you, okay, you can come on in and do what you need to do. Having those additional computers makes it difficult to tell what's in there and what's not, and be able to do a true audit of what is still existing. And keeping that clean is also just appropriate maintenance. We've also started to force the deployment of antivirus to the organization. There was a number of workstations that didn't have antivirus. I've, honestly, I've lost count, I think I was in and around thirty-five the last time I did. And we also had five servers of the PD that had no antivirus at all. That's a significant vulnerability in and of itself. There was a, a hidden network segment removed that was established to allow for VPN access. However, it did not have a necessary SSL certificate, which made it a vulnerability that has since been de-provisioned. And a SSL VPN by way of our firewall, which I'll define in just a moment, was implemented with the appropriate SSL certificate. That SSL cert is a hundred and thirty dollar expenditure, and it is critical to having a VPN connection. VPN connection, for those of you might not know, is what essentially allows you to work remotely and have access to the internal resources. If I need to get to a network share, an internally hosted application, and I'm outside of the network, I authenticate. The way we have it set up is by two-factor, which means you need to have a username and a password, as well as a token that's randomly generated on your phone. That way, if your password's lost, people can't get in there, because they not only need something you know, but they also need something you have. So again, as I mentioned, that's on the firewall. Now, the firewall is a perimeter defense, it's essentially a mode for your network. It allows you to limit sites that people are going to or not going to. It allows you to have insight into what traffic is occurring on the network. And it also, most importantly, protects you from the outside world. Anyone who's trying to get in has to go through that firewall, that is your defense. The local accounts on that, which would include administrative access as well, had no password requirements whatsoever. A password of the number one would have been a valid credential. There was also no lockout policy, which means that you could try indefinitely to authenticate, and nothing would stop you. Typically, a lockout of five attempts is pretty standard. So if you come into the office, you try to log into your computer, you mess up a few times, you get locked out. That's so someone else can't just persistently try and try and try until they get your credential. Also, quite basic process and quite critical. You can't just let people indefinitely try things until they get in. So we, there's been, the local admin passwords had to be secured on the workstations. I'm not going to go into detail, but they were a very basic password. A local admin account essentially allows them to log into the computer and just that computer in front of you. Those accounts are necessary for maintenance on the workstations, especially if they're off of the domain. Remember I told you, you log into Active Directory, the domain manages that computer. If it drops off, that's how I'm able to re-add it, along with some other locally necessary tasks. We've stopped the deployments of some questionable licensed OSs. So it's, it's a concerning point, but it's, it's a technicality. Microsoft allowed people to upgrade from Windows Seven to Windows Ten for free for some time. Now, they've verbally said they've stopped doing that, but the method through which you can do so still works. And there's a lot of conversation back and forth in, in, you know, the IT world, trying to determine whether or not you can still actually use that. It's still on, we can still upgrade, it doesn't complain, is that okay? Microsoft has not come out with an answer. So instead of questioning that, it's a hundred and forty dollars a license, we're just using licenses. It's a safer bet, and there's really no reason to put ourselves in that position if we don't know the answer. We also didn't have a password exploratory period or complexity requirements for Gmail, or G suite. That is the email, there's also Google Docs, there's, there's a whole suite. It's essentially Google's answer to Microsoft Office, it's web-based, it's what the organization uses. So again, there was no exploratory period, so if you started today and your password was something introductory, and you chose to keep it that way, that's fine, because there was also no password requirements, and you could have done so indefinitely. There was never a requirement to change that password at any time. We've implemented centralized logging. It's still on a trial license, but we are working with the vendor to get the appropriate licensing for that. It's a matter of counting all the endpoints that we want to address, so there's some complexities there. But what that essentially allows us to do is have a centralized location to check all the logs. Everything that happens on servers, on the computers, it's logged. So if I try to log into a server and it fails, that gets logged. A number of other things are logged as well, but there's many critical things that need to be watched for. You can see when there's vulnerabilities that are being exploited. You can see when there's bad actors just doing things they shouldn't be. You can just see standard maintenance trends overall by watching that logging. And having it centralized means, as opposed to looking at two dozen servers, you can look at one repository where it's all gathered there, and if there's something connecting A to B, this is happening on this server and that's happening on that workstation, you can see that. As opposed to checking each individual workstation, each individual server, those logs can be in the thousands for every hour. It's impossible to review them on a one-off basis. It's also a requirement for the police department. Part of the CGS information security policy mandates, I believe it's on a weekly basis, that all of the audit logs are reviewed. As it was, that would have been a difficult, a very difficult task, especially with the staffing levels. There were, there were five accounts. So we've, as standard practice, we've started in on a risk assessment. That's essentially when either there's a change of guard, or on an annual basis, you have an external company come in, and they tell you all the ways that you could possibly face a, a bad actor, right? Anything, doors that aren't locked, computers that aren't secured, anything to that effect. They come in and tell you, they look at all the servers. One thing that they did find is, since 2017, five of our accounts have been found on the dark web. Now, what that means is, say I'm in sales and I have a company email, and I stay at Marriott Hotel a lot. I go on, I register for a points account, I use my town email. I also use my town password, because it's easy, it's easy to remember, I'm already using it everywhere else. This is why they tell you not to do that. That system gets breached, you have the same username and password that you're using here. It's pretty easy to tell where it belongs, because it's in the domain name, at newmofford.org, there's no questions there. A little bit more research would pretty easily tell you that it's Google Apps, and then someone can log into your email account, and from there, they just work their way in, work their way in. So we did find five accounts that were found on there. Not atypical, but something to be concerned about. The, actually, I'm gonna skip over that one. So there were, Active Directory, again, we keep touching on this. There were twenty user accounts with exposed plain text passwords in there. So Active Directory, in a read-only manner, can be accessed from any computer in the organization. There is a number of fields that are in there, one of them being the description field, is readily accessible on the first tab. It's also readily visible in the column view that you see when you first open the client. And twenty different accounts, including one administrative account, had the password stored in the description field. Not only is that not standard practice, but that's a significant security risk.
Can I just interrupt for a second?
Yeah, absolutely.
So all of this good stuff, have we updated the personnel policies, that these things shall not be done for employees?
So actually, as we're uncovering this, we're working this into the personnel policy, absolutely.
Okay.
And the last one I wanna touch on today is, we've conducted now two phishing tests. The first, we had one failure, and the second, we had three. The first failure was within the first couple of minutes of it being live. The individual clicked on the link, then proceeded to submit their username and password for their Gmail account. So they, they did everything that you're essentially told not to do, and frankly, it's likely due to lack of user education. We are looking into a solution, it's called Noblefour. And one of the, the great things it does is it's actually based on the idea of education. It's not based on the idea of just doing the phishing simulations. And forgive me for assuming everyone knows what phishing is, just for a brief moment. Essentially, what you do is you send an email to someone, and you mask it to look like it's appropriate. I'm sending an email on behalf of Personnel, actually, it's one of the ones that I did. And it's a Google Doc, and it looks like it's work that the person is supposed to do. So they say Personnel has something that, you know, after our meeting, we discussed, here's the things you need to address. Okay, what's happening there? So they click on the link, they go in, and they think they're on a Google Apps page, they think they're authenticating to get to that document that HR sent them. What they're actually doing is logging into a malicious site that someone set up to look as if it was a Google Apps page. They log in, they provide their credentials, a lot of them will actually go pass through too. So it captures those credentials, quickly passes them along to the actual provider, you're logged in, you don't know the difference. And now, your credentials are out there, and that's how they start in. And phishing attacks are a common way that ransomware can find its way into the organization. Now, there's a number of other things that are actively being addressed that I cannot speak to. They would present a significant security risk. And until those are remediated, again, I can't really speak to them. But if any of us have any questions about the things that I've talked about thus far, I'd be happy to.
Thank you, David. So glad you're here to clean things up.
Thank you.
I just want to know, based on something we discussed earlier, the people who did not seem to understand what the routine was, are they now currently knowledgeable in doing what they're supposed to do?
The individuals that had failures in the phishing, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, that's one.
There were direct conversations with all of them. And if we can implement something, either Noble4 or like Noble4, one of the other things it does is when you fail, it automatically assigns training. And the training is only five, ten, sometimes fifteen minutes long. They're micro-trainings. So they're not intrusive. I mean, some of the trainings that were required to do can be upwards of an hour, and that can become difficult. But yes, so they were sat with, I reviewed with them what to look for, what they missed.
And have they since had the same mistake?
The individual that failed the first time was not among the results from the second time. There has not been a third test as of yet.
But there will be.
As soon as we pay for the software.
No, because, just so you know, in my mind, having dealt with this with lots of clients over the years, there's no excuse. It's no different than telling somebody, your workday is nine to five. You don't come in at nine, you come in at nine-thirty. You do it once, you get a warning, you do it again, it goes in your file. You do it again, you're out of the door. And this is something that can compromise everything. And we all know that other towns and schools and everybody has been hacked. And there's certainly no reason to endorse somebody doing what they're told not to do and then trained on how not to do it. So I'm glad you're looking into the Noble4 too. That's good.
Mike?
Thank you very much, David. Maybe the mayor can answer it, or David. Does the town have insurance against?
We do have insurance through Kerma. When I first became mayor, coming from finance, one of the things that I know in banking is cybersecurity is utmost.
Absolutely.
So one of the things that I've really stressed is our cybersecurity. When David came on board, I said, let's do a risk assessment because I knew there was some vulnerability. As you can see, we're working through, with David's help, these really vulnerable, vulnerable issues that we are taking care of as of now. And I can't thank David enough for coming on and really doing this due diligence and seeing where these really holes in our systems are.
But if we're hacked, hypothetically, God forbid we're hacked, is there a plan in place where the insurance kicks in?
Yes, so Kerma, we do have that insurance, yes.
That doesn't help.
Any other questions?
So a part of that, just to speak to your question as well, is preparedness. So once ransomware hits, depending on the strain, some of the decryption keys are readily available. Essentially, what they do is they lock down all their computers. They use an encryption key to do so. So they have the only key to it, and they'll say, give us this sum of money, and we'll turn over that key. But it's a ransom by malicious actors. There's no guarantee, even when you give them that money, that they'll give you the key. You could turn over the money, and then that's it. You're still in the exact same position that they left you. If you do give them the money, you've given the money, you'll probably do it again. So now, you're also furthermore a target. So one of the best things you can do is to have the off-site backups, as opposed to giving them the funds. You just restore to a state previous to when they did that, find the vulnerability, patch it, and move forward. But without those off-site backups, you are entirely at their will.
You're screwed.
Yep.
Good job.
Kenny, Doug?
Thank you for your time, you're definitely knowledgeable. You mentioned there was five usernames that went to the dark web, correct?
Usernames and passwords, yes.
So you just eliminated them, and then they get new IDs and new passwords?
Their passwords have been reset since because of some of the password complexity rules that I've put in place.
Is there a system in place, maybe in America, that you had mentioned that people were using them to get points and stuff like that when they went to a hotel or using them? Is that, are we not doing that anymore? We set precedent not to do that for town employees? Not to user emails to do that, or?
So it's not entirely inappropriate for you to use your town email. So for example, we have iPads. And when you use an iPad, one of the things that you are typically necessitated to do is to set up an iTunes account to set up the device or to leverage some of the features. If you use your personally-owned email and you left tomorrow, I have no way of recovering that device because it's now under your account, and I would have to work with you. And hopefully, you'd be willing to do so now that you're no longer an employee. You would log into your account and give me the credentials to be able to release that device. Otherwise, it's a brick. We have five of them now. There's nothing you can do with the device. That's it. It's essentially under their ownership. So instead of using a personal email to set up that account, you would use your town email. So there's appropriate use and there's inappropriate use. Really, the more pressing concern is the reuse of passwords. You can't use the same password for more than one system. You need to use different credentials. And that becomes difficult. And one of the things we're looking into is a password storage solution for the end-users as well as for the IT department. I can tell you, we have a few passwords. And when you're following those complexity requirements and you're trying to keep up with those things, it can get challenging. So that is one thing we're working on. You can also implement single sign-on, which essentially means that same credential can get you into a number of places, and that limits that. But really, the best defense to that is being cautious on some basic password rules, and that's all about user education. And once we are through some of these initial pain points, I think user education is going to be one of my primary objectives.
Thank you. Chris?
Again, thank you for the work you've been doing.
Thank you.
On the off-site backups that are in the cloud, did I hear correctly that some of those records are with the police department?
They are.
So I'm assuming...
Encrypted.
There's, yeah, adequate security for that. Did I hear that all users have dual authentication to get into their system?
So I'm still working through. There were some exclusions previously added before my employment to allow individuals to not have the two-factor. I believe the majority of those were due to it being an inconvenience, which is not an acceptable rationale. Inconvenience is having your entire network shut down and encrypted. Having to use a secure means to access your town accounts, that's the cost of doing business in this world.
And I use it for work, and I was leery about it. We, my company instituted it nine months ago. It's really not bad at all.
It's not. The same thing occurred with the lockout. There was some pushback from the fact that the computer locks after ten minutes. But frankly, what do you need it unlocked for if you're not using it for ten minutes? It's a bit of a nuisance. But jostle the mouse for a second while you're sitting at your desk working on other things. And if you're not sitting at your desk, the very first thing you should do before you stand up is hold that Windows key and press the L. That locks the computer instantaneously. If you're not in front of it, why is it unlocked? It's the end-user who's going to be culpable because unless there's a way to hold someone else accountable, to know who it was, if someone sits in front of my workstation and does something malicious, it's under my user context. I'm the person who perpetrated that, as far as you can see. And frankly speaking, if I didn't secure my workstation, I have culpability for that reason as well.
And lastly, and I don't know if this really comes under your purview or not, but as a town, one thing I learned on the Facilities Utilization Committee, that we have just massive amount of records in many buildings, police, and school, and Town Hall, and DPW. Certainly, and it just takes up a lot of square footage in all our buildings. Maybe sometime in the future, we could look at digitizing a lot of that and creating a lot of space.
Unfortunately, like, say, Lanyard's records, you have to keep the actual physical copy, unfortunately.
No, I have had some initial conversations, for example, with Greg Valero, HR, Personnel. What you can do is, so for him to digitize all of his records would be a significant, significant expense. But what you can do to start moving in that direction is do this point-forward digitization. So you start today, all your new records become digital. If anything, you're finding your way in the right direction. You can start testing out softwares, make sure the implementation is one that you like and that works well. But you're also not further burying yourself for that time when you do decide to make that change. I've had this conversation with a number of departments. A lot of them have, as Pete mentioned, limitations because of state requirements for record-keeping. The building department, the plans, the physical plans, my understanding is they have to be kept for the lifetime of the structure. That is a significant burden, space alone. And without the ability to digitize those things, there's really not much my department can do to really assist with that. But moving us forward in the appropriate direction is the task that I'm left with. Thank you.
Tom?
David, your reputation precedes you. You are far more impressive here than the fantastic stories I've heard of what you've done for the IT department.
Thank you.
I'm incredibly impressed. I've been sitting here for ten years. I had a lot of doubt of what was going on in that IT department. Come every budget season, I questioned the former director multiple times and never was satisfied with the answer. You've given me more information in fifteen minutes than I've heard in the last ten years. I am incredibly impressed with you, and I want to thank the mayor. Not only, as this is one of the best hires I've seen, but the other hires that you have brought in in this last two years have been incredible. The morale across this entire, this entire town government is a hundred and eighty degrees away from where it was. And I want to thank all the incomers here, the folks that have stepped up into these new positions. I am very, very confident in the future in New Millford with the leaders we have in some of these departments. And David, thank you for bringing this to us. This was something that needed to be brought out a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Kane?
Thanks, Ken, David. Could you possibly introduce your second-in-command? He's never been to a council meeting, I don't think.
He has not, this is my soon-to-be stepson.
Oh, I thought that was your side...
No.
Oh, sorry. Well, that's why, could you bring your... Peter is his name, right?
Yes.
Is he still there?
He is still, yes.
Okay. He's never been before us in a council meeting. That's why I didn't know, that's not who it was.
I understand he's offered to come, but was otherwise instructed not to.
Oh, well, could we have him drop in someday, Mayor?
Well, I'm dropping.
You know, so we know.
That was prior to me, by the way.
Because otherwise, I'd be asking this guy to help me with my password.
Prior to me, by the way.
I should clarify, it was an internal decision.
I was going to ask your son-in-law to help me with some two-factor stuff I need on another job, so.
Stepson.
Stepson, sorry. I was going to ask you, you would have been able to help me.
Doug?
Pete, just real quick, I remember the prior IT guys talking about FABs and the buildings and the codes. Where are we at with that?
Well, before, some of the things that I just discussed became a significant priority over those things, not that access control isn't, frankly, that needs to be a priority as well.
Sure.
This building alone presents a lot of concerns. The funds put forward, I think, were seventeen-five for that project, for the building that the IT department currently resides in, the probate court. That would have been for the previous director to have a locksmith come in and install the electronic latch mechanisms on the door frame, and then for the IT department to do the remainder of the installation, which came in again seventeen-five. I've now had a few vendors come in, and they've been in and around half of that. Now, I don't know which vendor I would be going with yet because I haven't had the opportunity to fully flesh that out. But I do believe that it's a critical concern to address. And I do believe that we can likely do so at a significantly lower spend than was previously imagined. It's also, to expound on that, it's important that we try to include as many buildings in town as possible. The Richmond Center has a dated system that could use some attention. The PD is on a disparate system. Nothing is interconnected at this time. Maintenance becomes a pressing concern as well. I can't get into detail, but reviewing the PD records, maintenance of the access control system did raise concerns, previous maintenance of it. Now, there is a vendor that I'm in discussions with right now that could possibly work with us on some of the existing hardware, which lowers the cost of the implementation in order to move over to what's more of an open-source implementation. So as opposed to doing, not really naming names, but one implementation that was looked at previously is one that's typically installed by alarm system organizations. But that's a closed system. You need their hardware, you need their software, that's it. Whereas these other implementations are open-source. You can use soft hardware from a number of vendors, all with their software. It's actually, I believe, one that's being considered by the Board of Education at this time as well. And it would integrate with their camera systems to allow for a number of added functionalities there. When the door is unlocked, you also get an image of who did that. If someone came in behind them, that camera system can actually identify that. So it's a promising system, but frankly, I needed to right the ship before I could attend to those things.
Thanks for the update.
Good job.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, item twelve, discussion on the sidewalk plan?
So this was sent to everyone as a PDF because of the length of the papers. The reason why it was brought in today was I spoke with our town planner and CEO, Officer Laura Regan, and town attorney, DeBella. The planning commission wanted to act on the sidewalk plan. And I think the council needs to be aware of the sidewalk plan, some of the highlights of the plan, so that we can bring back kind of your thoughts, process, on this sidewalk master plan, bicycle master plan. If you get a chance to prove it, I don't know if you did over the weekend, but some of the highlights of the plan are. You're looking at about fifty-three miles of sidewalks. They go all the way up to Gaylardsville, they go into Mariel. And the questions that I had myself were, first of all, how are we going to pay for it? Second of all, who's going to maintain it? And third, especially if we're looking on bringing these sidewalks all the way up to Gaylardsville, there's lots of property that I believe Attorney DeBella can opine upon that would have some form of the town having to take the property.
Yeah, the roads aren't, the roads are not wide enough. They just, they're just a way, are not wide enough to go three miles. Which means that in order to implement sidewalks and stay within ASHTO requirements, engineering requirements, you'd have to do eminent domain taking of property because there's not enough land. But that's a, without that, there's no sidewalks. So again, I haven't done a full survey because I didn't do a title search of fifty-three miles of road.
Really?
Budget's not big enough. But the reality, the reality is that it's aspirational, I think, at this point. And I think you're going to, we're going to, I think the committee's step, the first step, real step, is going to have to prioritize where the sidewalks might want to go. But the takings are going to be a lot.
Right.
Mayor, just a quick question. So, getting aside, where did the impetus for this come from? Fifty-three miles going to Gaylardsville or wherever, Mariel? What brought this about?
So this was done by Kathy Castaneda, I believe, Dan Stanton, former town engineer.
Was some survey done, or some company brought in?
This was part of their Complete Streets program they were looking at.
Oh, I remember that, right.
That we were opined upon a couple of years back. That we were opined upon a couple of years back.
Right.
And then this kind of was morphed from that into this plan. And within this plan, as you can see, they have some existing conditions. And then, as I said to me, the concerning part, as I was perusing through this, is just the actual number of miles of sidewalks. And a concern to me is, we have sidewalks here on West Street, South Main Street, that are crumbling. And I think we need to take care of the sidewalks that we have now, before we would do some major expansion of miles and miles of sidewalks. Another concern is, this council has already talked about, concerning the sidewalks that we're already looking at on Route 7 through grants, is the actual cost.
Yeah.
So we had, I had Dan Calhoun, as we talked about before, look at the ones at Pettybone. We don't have the manpowers we just spoke about for winter maintenance. So even those sidewalks alone are going to cost us in a major winter around between $4,000 and $7,000.
That's just maintenance.
Just maintenance.
That's not putting the sidewalk in.
No, no, that's just maintenance.
Snow removal.
Snow removal, regular removal, correct.
Sweeping it, fixing it.
Then you're going to have, the Board of Education is going to have to do their piece, which is the whole sidewalk piece across the high school. And my question would be, is as we're moving these forward, if you're going to make the homeowner or the business property owner maintain the sidewalk, because that's how it is today, what happens if they don't do it?
Right. We discussed all that.
You're going to, right, we discussed that, you're going to end up having the town have to do it. So then we're going to have to have additional staff, additional maintenance, additional cost. So I think this is very important, as we move forward in these type of plans. As Councilwoman Heda said, we need to have a cost, so that the taxpayers can see this is exactly what it is.
And what was the average cost per mile of the one we were talking about on deciding, was it going to go down with 7, come back up towards Big Y? What was that approximately?
I think, I think I have that, because I was looking into this, because I didn't believe the $2 million. I can, we'll talk about the bike later. But from Patriots Way to Riverwalk, if I'm not mistaken, it was $12 a square foot, or $60 a linear foot. Now, you notice in their footnote, it says asphalt. We do asphalt, so that right there is an understatement based upon the materials.
Right, right.
So if you do the calculation of the linear feet for 56 miles, it's $3.5 million plus ride of way, plus terrain design, plus if you have to pay people for their property, plus tree removal. So.
$3.5 million for the whole thing.
So I think the $2 million on page 29 is pretty understated.
A mile.
But.
No, no, they're saying $2 million for the whole 55.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Which I think is just crazy.
But let's back up a step, and here's, I'm going to get on the soapbox a little bit. I know none of you are surprised. I'm kind of astounded. You call it a plan? I, I tell you what, these consultants come to our town, and they never provide the detail. There are all these maps, they talk about all these different permutations of how wide it should be and how it should be engineered, but there's no detail of how they rolled up to the $2 million. So I wonder how much we pay these people?
Well, what they're saying is.
Because they didn't, they didn't do the job.
It's cost based on, cost for pedestrian and bicycle list infrastructure improvements 2013 prepared for FHWA. So it's some standard pull out of the air.
So here's what they do. Yeah, they pull it out of the air, as opposed to, if they took the time to do all of these maps, then on those maps in the different section, they should have a detailed list of.
The grading.
This section, yeah, needs this work, and this section needs that work.
Yep.
And some prioritization based upon pedestrian foot traffic.
Come on.
As well as bicycle prioritization.
And they want to go on both sides of the road.
Yep.
So that means, that means title searching times two.
Yeah.
Eminent domain.
160.
Whatever construction stuff needs to be done and trees.
So just to finish.
But why Mariel?
So just to finish. So from my perspective, there's a lot more detail that needs to be provided, so that we don't get into this, and then discover we got to pay four times the amount that is actually put in here, and then do some sense of prioritization, again, based upon traffic, and taking into consideration, what about our existing sidewalks that need work? I think we really, yeah, we need a detail, and then we need some prioritization. How much do we pay for this? Do we know?
No, it was a long time ago.
I'll get you the number.
But you know, we spent a lot of time here discussing the sidewalks that we had some grant money for. Was it going to go down in front of the high school? Was it not? Who's going to take care of it? What's the enforcement? And that went on for quite a while.
Yep.
I can't imagine how much time it's going to take to even think about 53 miles. And I, I mean, it's a nice idea, but don't we have a Riverwalk and a bike and River Trail already in the works?
So, so lastly, just to kind of give you a rough number, the way I was kind of looking at it, if we take the quarter of a mile for the Riverwalk that was there, done a few years ago, that was $530,000 for a quarter of a mile. So if you take the full mile, it's $2.1 million.
That's asphalt, too.
So $2.1 million, I could probably get.
Yeah, but it's a funny permugal asphalt.
Yeah. I'm just saying, so, so I'm just saying roughly take 20% off of that, I probably could get two or three more roads done for that.
Yeah. So then let's talk about, just before we move on, let's talk about the bike numbers. So I pull, I did a little Google search, and if you, there's some good studies out there by Oregon, who looked at all these different types of bike paths. And again, I'm not against the sidewalks, I'm not against the bike paths, I just think we need to go into this with our eyes wide open. And one of the cities in Oregon said that for their 300 miles, which is pretty close to our 200 miles, they estimated it to cost $60 million because of all the costs of the widening and the signage and the cuts.
Right.
And all the changes to the traffic lights.
Right. Not just construction, not maintenance.
This is for us to review and think about.
Okay.
It's not for us to make any decisions.
So how do we get this more accurate before we waste any time reviewing something that's not accurate?
We'll have to pay somebody to come up.
So Randy, first, first of all, can we, I know planning was looking at trying to implement this. So is there a way we send a letter to planning, tell them that we want to look at this, hold a public hearing? I mean, there's still lots of questions, I think, as this body still has a lot of questions.
I have a suggestion.
But I don't think we can implement a plan that's wrong.
Let's hear your suggestion.
Back a step.
I suggest that you have them come before the town council, and explain what the rationale and explain what, what's behind this, and how the conclusions are supported. Because I was, I was looking at legalities. I don't, I don't, I don't obviously do policy. But, but, CEO Regan and I spent a lot of time on this, and she's, she's, she's a master's degree in planning. So I would, I would think that you might want the planners here.
Yeah.
To determine what the, the critical basis was for the conclusions. And you might want to have CEO Regan, you're, she's, she's versed in this.
Absolutely.
That's my suggestion.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions? Mike?
Well, what do you think?
What do I think about 53 miles of sidewalks?
Bleed his lips.
If you had to prioritize, what direction would you go in?
As far as the sidewalks?
As sidewalks.
I mean, right, I mean, right now, we're looking at sidewalks coming down from Canterbury School. We were looking at sidewalks and looking at Connecticut DOT for some of the sidewalks on Route 7. I definitely would ask our DPW team, because they would be the ones well-versed on traffic counts, how things are, you know, how things are working. I 100% would rely on our zoning enforcement officer, town planner, Laura Regan, with her insights, because that's her job. So I would take into account all those things before I would be even considering where to even put sidewalks. I definitely think 53 miles is a lot.
Just a, just a side note, can you tell me if McDonald's is going to put a sidewalk in front of their new restaurant?
Oh, I think there, I think there is.
I would think, right? Because that's what we're.
New construction, I think.
You mean the renovation?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you meant there was another one coming.
I'm not sure, but I think so. But I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions on this topic?
No, I think we should revisit it.
Gotcha.
And perhaps have planning here, and we'll set aside a few hours.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Item 13.
Can we do this all at once?
And we have one thing to go to before we adjourn after this. Item 13, a move to approve the Parks and Rec requests. Donation of $100 from Asphalt Repair Solutions, North Larky Road, Oxford, for candy for the Halloween trunk or treat special events.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, thank you.
And donation of $50 from Meadow Brook Gardens, 228 Danbury Road, candy for the Halloween trunk or treat and special events.
Is that ended?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then Parks and Rec is requesting that, Stephanie, the donations be put into the revenue account. Greg, have you changed this account, too?
I have.
Okay. As the revenue account will be 104-505-0044-715, for further appropriation into account, Those are Parks and Rec programs specific.
Correct.
And the Parks and Rec Commission would like to thank Asphalt Repair Solutions and Meadow Brook Gardens for their generosity.
Any discussion?
Right, we need to go back.
Aye.
Post, thank you.
We need to go back to our native Meadow property, and before we adjourn, we need to, although it was part of the motion that this be.
Set a date.
Sent to planning for an 8/24 referral, I just want to clarify that. We also need to set a town meeting, no less than five and no greater than 14 days from this vote. Would you like to give me some dates there?
Want to do the next council meeting, before?
Which is?
November 11th?
No, 11/12. 11th is Memorial, or Veterans Day.
Veterans Day.
Does it work?
Yeah, so Tuesday.
Doesn't work?
It's 15 days. You're going to have to set that date a later date, so you're, so you're going to have a 14-day schedule.
Set the date at a later date?
Yeah.
Okay.
How about legalese?
All right.
Okay.
We're going to set the date at a later date.
On November 12th, we'll set the date?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Is that correct?
That's the date for the date.
Set it on November 12th.
You can set it in the next meeting, then.
Right.
It has to be less than 14 days.
Right, so the set of the 11th could be, the date could be the 25th. Or it could be less than, so it can be the 12th. Why can't it be the 12th?
12th is 15 days from.
Days from today.
So it's not 14.
So it's not 14.
So we see the limits. We'll set the date on the 12th, then.
Correct.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Walter, are we set?
Motion's settled.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.